All right, it is five thirty, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, we have one addition to our agenda. We are going to have an executive session prior to the start, or as one of the first things that we do on this. So now that you've both been notified of that, do I have a motion? Do you have any other amendments? You both had a chance to look at the agenda. Any, are we good with it?
I have no modifications to it, Mayor.
I have no additional modifications, Mayor.
So I need to entertain a motion?
I move we accept the agenda as amended to include an additional executive session.
All in favor, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. And I do want to recognize before we go into executive session, we have someone here that has a birthday today, and I would like to wish her a happy birthday, Kelly.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Now, we're going to go into an executive session for twenty minutes. And the motion is, I move that we recess for an executive session concerning confidential data relating to financial affairs and/or trade secrets of a company pursuant to the exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B four. The open meeting will resume at five fifty-five. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. That'll be the Commission, David, Kelly, Chuck, and Jim.
Lacey.
And Lacey. All right, the meeting is back in session. There was no action taken. Moving along, gentlemen, the consent agenda. You've had a chance to look at that. Any modifications on that that you want to make, or are we good?
Mr. Mayor, we did approve the agenda.
Agenda, all right. So I entertain a motion on this?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Item three, presentation, twenty twenty-two budget presentations. First up is Independence Main Street.
And then you don't, it'll just automatically go, David. She has it timed.
Okay.
Tabitha? Oh, it's already started, okay.
Yeah, Tabitha?
As you know, I'm Tabitha Snodgrass Minifinits, Main Street, and I'm joined by my Board President, Brian Height, and Julie Volker, a longtime board member. And I'm going to go ahead and let this play for you, and I'll make some comments along the way, and then I'll answer any questions, and then I'll let them talk for you. It should go. If you hit play, it should have. So I put together just a few highlights. I didn't want to be here all night, so I just hit some of the, hit some of the highlights for you. So in twenty twenty, we were able to add one set of new Christmas lights to the downtown intersection. We're hoping to add one more this year. And a lot of people said we wouldn't be able to keep the hanging baskets going downtown, where we're proud that we have done three consecutive years now. So we've got twenty-four of them in the downtown area, and they're beautiful. And in twenty twenty, Kansas Main Street came back, and we hosted the very first annual meeting with Kansas Main Street in March twenty twenty. I think it was right when Dicky's was opening also, right before the pandemic. And we held a few events COVID-style, as you can see with the mask. We really wanted to focus on some ways to still encourage people to spend downtown, and we were practicing safety, so we did those. And we are proud that we sold sixty-three thousand dollars worth of Main Street gift certificates last year with the help of the city, of course, and the college, and many other entities in the community, compared to the just over forty thousand we sold in twenty nineteen. During COVID, we switched our marketing strategies to marketing our downtown more as a destination with all of the businesses going together and doing a big ad in several different magazines around town versus just advertising for themselves. We were able to capture a green space downtown. As you can see, this is the before pictures of Patio two-ten. I really wanted you to look at that one. These pictures were actually taken this morning, so this is the after effect of that. So you can see what a difference that makes. And I will note, we, you know, our operating budget is about seventy-two thousand roughly, and this project today has a hundred and three thousand dollars in it. So we really, it's truly a community gathering space, and we have used community, hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours to make it the space that it is today. And you can see there, it's getting lots of usage. Here's our final plans. You can kind of see it's a little bit dark. We have a few more things to tweak on there. We want to add a wrought iron sign at the front, at the first two poles, that you know you're at Patio two-ten. It just says Patio two-ten, and there you go. And so, but most importantly, I just wanted to let you know that we are still an accredited Main Street community, and that is very important. It's not just writing a check and paying for our dues. We are interviewed by the Kansas Main Street, the National Main Street. They interview myself, they interview the board members, they interviewed Kelly. And they went, it was a process that you do. They audit our minutes, they audit our books. And so it is very important, just this week, we are, since we are accredited Main Street, we're eligible for many grants. That's how we got the Union Pacific Grant last year to help with COVID. And also yesterday, the Department of Commerce picked us to apply for a grant with three other communities in Kansas, and it's because we are an accredited Main Street community. It's on rural placemaking. So it is important for us to keep that accreditation. If you do let that lapse, you don't just get back in by signing a check. It's something that you have to get in, you have to do more paperwork, and there's a process. They only allow so many in a year. So we are proud that we are an accredited Main Street affiliation. So besides that, I just want to thank you for your continued support of Independence Main Street. We are funded in three parts. We do one fundraiser a year, and people always ask why we only do that, and I think you've probably heard my spill before. But we don't want to continuously go out to our businesses that we're supposed to be helping and asking for donations to help us do another fundraiser when we feel like our job is to bring business to them and not constantly ask them for a donation. So we are funded from our fundraiser, our membership drive, and the city funding. So we do really appreciate it. So I'm going to let Julie and Brian say a few things.
Thank you, Tabitha. Julie?
Thank you.
Yes?
I appreciate the opportunity. And Tabitha really told you a lot about Main Street, but I want to tell you about Tabitha. Because Patio two-ten, she and honestly Lori Kelly have made that happen. Yes, there was a lot, a lot of support from Spark Funds. We had a great deal of individual donations to that. But actually, the muscle and the hard work that went into that and in really making it happen were the hours and hours that Tabitha and Lori spent painting and staining and building walls and everything else. You know, the other thing that I think most of our retailers would tell you is that Tabitha is on the ground. It is extremely important that we understand what our local retail and downtown businesses need. And she does a fabulous job of really understanding the finances that they're under and the restraints and things that go along with, you know, you need to have a bottom line. And they can't be successful unless we bring people here. And so I just, I just want to say thank you for your support. And the other thing that I want to point out is a lot of the dollars that you do give to Main Street end up right back in the community. Because we spent a lot of money, both money that came from our budget and some grant money that we received this last year to do the Give Back Program in twenty twenty, where people would bring their receipts into Main Street, and then we would match what they spent downtown with Main Street dollars, which kept the dollars in town. And so, you know, we are constantly trying to do things that will bring people and dollars to Independence. So your support is just really integral for having us be able to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Brian?
Hi. As you all know, I own a retail store downtown. And so I like to look at things from a more kind of a business perspective. And so what's one of, one of the main things you always look at when you're in business? And that is, what is return on investment? And so, you know, as we're asking for funding from, from you all again this year, we have to think about how that funding is leveraged, how it multiplies. And that money, as it goes back into the community, multiplies several times over, both in, you know, in retail trade, but in also sales tax revenue. So it's, Julie mentioned that Main Street Gives Back Program, where people brought their receipts when they spent at a local store, and Main Street matched that dollar for dollar, and that went right back in to those local stores. And in Magnolia, we had a little pile of those things that I am certain only happened during the height of COVID because Main Street was able to leverage our budget with grant money and anything else we could pull together. We actually redirected some funds from things that we had already raised money for in the past because this was so important. But because we were able to, to pull that budget together and make it happen, it seriously helped the downtown in retail, and I'm sure in the restaurants too. So it's, it's important to think about the leveraging of those funds when making those kinds of decisions. So as a, as a Main Street board member and as a downtown retailer, I sincerely appreciate the help that you guys provide for us. Now, if there's any questions for us, we can answer some?
Well, I think that it's, it goes without saying that we really appreciate the efforts to bolster our downtown. It is incredibly important to the city and to the community that the downtown prosper and stay vibrant and stay a destination. So thanks for all that you do to make those things happen. And I believe that your budget is, once again, or your request is exactly the same as it has been in several years past. Am I correct? No increase?
I think we got an increase for the first time, was it two years ago? Believe it was two years ago we had an increase, but that was the first increase in the budget we'd had in many, many years. The one thing that we are asking for this year that would be different is Patio two-ten. We would request that the city consider absorbing the water bill and the weed and fertilizer for the grass that's there. We're taking care of the mowing, we've got volunteers to do that. We're watering all the flowers, and thanks to Winkelman's, the flowers look lovely. But those would be two things that would really help with our budget. So that's, that's the only kind of additional item that we'd love to see happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Driving by that property that's in that condition for so many years, after a while, you, you don't even look at it anymore. It's just a part of something that you drive by every day without paying attention anymore. It's just been there for so long. So it's quite a drastic change and a huge improvement to the downtown by that property being developed as the way it is. And great use, I've heard a lot of good comments about that. And I know Tabitha puts a lot of effort out. I see her walking, watering the plants at Patio two-ten, the hanging baskets, you know, popping in and out of stores. And I have no idea how many hours she works, but I would imagine it's probably quite a bit pretty time-consuming. So it just shows what, what a community, a city government, the public, what we can do when we collectively work together that allows us to collaborate and to, to build back better, a better community, which benefits everyone here that lives here. It benefits our business community, helps us grow, helps us with sales tax money, you know, which we continue to need. So my hat's off to, to all affiliated with the Main Street program, Tabitha, Julie, Brian. Thank you for being here tonight, and keep up the good work. It's appreciated.
I appreciate all your, your effort and your work and interest in the downtown. It's interesting, I believe Main Street was established in the early eighties. And from the initial concept to where we are today, it's, it's evolved, not changed. But I believe it's really evolved, and everybody that's come along has given part of themselves. And you're an example of, the Main Street Board is an example of continuing that, that not staying in the past, but looking ahead to have Main Street, the street be the emphasis, and you're modifying it as the needs change. And that vision is each of you are putting part of yourself down there, a legacy for somebody else to come along. We know that, you know, eventually somebody else will step in. But you have made a remarkable impact on the downtown with, with your visions and your, the teamwork that has grown. And being involved in business and yet taking the time to be involved in Main Street is a sacrifice of somewhere in your lives. And just like Mayor said with Tabitha, you've been putting a lot of extra hours in to see the plants are watered and to see things going on. And I know that you don't quit thinking about Main Street at five o'clock, that it's something as you're driving in another town, you, you see, oh, yeah, maybe we can do that in Independence and take it and modify it for Independence. And I, you know, really want to make it clear that we appreciate all your effort, and sometimes it goes unsaid, but, you know, we're all, it takes all of us in every capacity, Main Street Chamber, you know, the Commission, the staff, everybody is making Independence different and unique and, and a place that people want to come and spend time to experience. So thank you. We appreciate all your effort.
Well, thank you. And I, just a side note I forgot to mention, so the month of June, we have to calculate our hours for the National Main Street volunteer hours. And the month of June, we had five hundred and ten volunteer hours, just in the month of June. Granted, I count my, anything over forty, I count as a volunteer hour, but that wasn't a ton in June. So that just serves a lot for our community, because we do have volunteers that help me on the weekends water, and our business owners help water in the mornings sometimes. So that's, that says a lot about the community that we are in. That's a lot of hours.
And the better part is a few weeks ago, we had a team from Shinute, Main Street, that came down to look at our city to figure out what we were doing. So kudos to you all too. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do, I do want to say too, Tabitha also serves on the Economic Development Advisory Board and on the Beautification Committee and, and helps us with a lot of other city projects as well that she didn't include on that. So she does help us with a lot of things at the city. We communicate quite often.
She wears many hats.
Yes.
You know, and sometimes all at the same time.
Yes.
Thank you. The Montgomery County Action Council, is Jim Kelly still here? Oh, okay. Jim, how are you this evening?
I'm good.
I didn't see you behind the pillar.
Yeah, that's a good place to sit, behind there. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And my name is Jim Kelly, as you mentioned, and I am the interim director of MAC. And here with our budget proposal for this current, this budget coming up, and, and also to give you a report of what's gone on. And I will start out by saying I had no part in any, any of these things that happened because they all happened before I got here. And it was Tricia Purdon and Kathy Thompson that put in the hours on, on this. Our budget request for your consideration is twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the same that it's been the last several years. And since coming, spending the first really five months out of town this year and coming back and getting in this, I was amazed to see all the activity that has gone on in these twelve COVID months. There's been just a tremendous amount of activity in the county, plus a tremendous amount of activity picking up again in the county, continuing. So there's been positive trends over the last twelve months, and it looks like the, the next months ahead could be even better, looking at what MAC has going. And I wanted to give you just a review of really from this time last year to this year, kind of some of the things that MAC has been involved in. And of course, it's a countywide program, so this could be activities, whether they were in Independence, Coffeyville, Cherryville, or Kaney, but things that have gone on. In, in the last twelve months, there's been a hundred jobs created. The MAC administered the CDBG CV grant, and in that grant, we had seventy-seven jobs retained by the distribution of those grants. There's been fifteen proposals submitted to prospective companies or site selectors. There have been four new businesses in twenty twenty-one, five expansion projects, and there, this time there's, this is six recruitment programs in progress. But since this was put together in the last week, I've had three other potential ones that could be coming at different places in the county. So a lot of activity, there was a project potential in Kaney, one in Coffeyville, and, and some other ones that came in just today. And some of the things that were notable to me when I looked at this is that our, our county is designated, we're a semi-urban county, and a semi-urban is based on population. And so there is a metropolitan area in Montgomery County that really encompasses all the cities. It's called the Coffeyville Metropolitan Area. And that area by, was ranked fifty-first in a twenty-one-way tie for new economic development projects in the United States in these last twelve months. And we're one of five metropolitan areas listed in Kansas in the top one hundred communities. So there's been a lot, you can tell from that, there's been a lot of activity, and that activity is, is continuing. Some of the other things that MAC has done is, like I said, coordinated the Spark Grant. Tricia served on a Rural Opportunity Zone Task Force to come up with an overhaul of the Rural Opportunity Zone Bill to make it a little better. And that, she also helped me, my, my committee in the House handled the renewal of the Rural Opportunity Zone this year because it was going to expire at June thirtieth. And so we had it in, and Tricia, Montgomery County is the second biggest user of ROS in the state. So with some of the stats she had, and she testified at the hearing, we were able to get a two-year extension through so we can work on this, these improvements to the bill. And that will be in my committee next year, and I've already got Tricia lined up to, to help on that out of her new job to do that. The, there was, MAC also administered some of the, the funds back through the Spark Program. And the fees that MAC, the administration fees that MAC got, they put them back into a, a separate fund for a grant program for a new gap financing and incentive fund for new businesses to try to help. That's one of the things that's always been missing. A lot of these would be smaller businesses right now, but that money was pulled out and put it in a dedicated fund for that. MAC has a very robust website. When I got in to start using it, they have a COVID response page they put in for the COVID crisis. They also, their website had sixteen thousand and six hundred and seventy-four hits in that twelve-month period, up about two thousand, twenty-two hundred from the year before. Their social media reach was sixty-four thousand, so there's people looking at Montgomery County. And another project that Tricia was involved in that, and had been for several years, and it's a Montgomery County project with all the cities, is looking at kind of a unified effort for highway improvements going through Montgomery County. And a couple of years ago, the cities of Independence, Coffeyville, Cherryville, and all got together, and, and Kaney got together, and with other counties up and down, other cities and counties up and down, Highway one-sixty-nine, to come up with a plan that everyone became aware that there's probably not going to be four lanes all the way through there. So looking at passing lanes where we could get them and looking for improvements where we can get them. And one of those improvements was completed out at the one-sixty-one-sixty-nine junction that puts some four-lane in for, you know, mile-plus area and probably a couple-mile area. But also, it was announced that along one-sixty-nine, there's going to be passing lanes from the Montgomery County line north up into Neosho County. And then also on, there was some other, two on one-sixty-nine, and then one on four-hundred. So all of these will help us to have a better highway access, particularly one-sixty-nine from Kansas City down into Tulsa. And that was a big MAC project that Tricia was one of the leaders on it, and it's beginning to, to pay, paying dividends. So a lot of activity, I mean, an amazing amount of activity last year and this year so far. And we appreciate, as always, the, the contribution from the City of Independence. The City of Independence contribution is the same request that was made to the City of Coffeyville, and a request was made this week to Montgomery County also. So we appreciate your consideration of this, and we appreciate your past willingness to help support MAC over the years. And, and I think right now, during COVID and all the benefits, where you thought they would have been lower, I think the efforts have really paid some dividends for Independence and Montgomery County. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, you might have.
Thank you, Jim. Of course, we all owe you a debt of gratitude for stepping in as interim director as, as Tricia has already taken her position with the state. So thank you for your leadership in that role with MAC. And I hope things continue to, to work in our favor and that we get you some help soon.
That would be nice.
Yeah, Jim, I just want to say thank you. I know Tricia had worked and did a lot of groundwork, and you have come and graciously come in to help and run this until a replacement for Tricia has been identified and chosen. But we can see the results of MAC just this year, as far as projects that have come before us. And it's, it's vital that we've been able to continue to grow even during a pandemic, COVID-nineteen, whether it's sales tax revenue, whatever, we've been able to hold steady and make gains where other areas have remained flat. So that's a testament to all the hard work, everyone that's associated. So that's a testament to all the hard work, everyone that's associated with MAC, that they put in, and the proof is in the pudding. And we've got some pretty good pudding right now. So thank you.
I think in the past, we looked at Independence, separate from Coffeyville and Caney, we all looked at independent entities. But the last five or six years, I think we saw the impact of the market in one town, how it affects all of us. And MAC has really been good of looking to consolidate and get us to work together as a region. And we realize that what Coffeyville gets, we benefit, and what we get Coffeyville benefits, and the same with Caney and Cherryville. MAC is that unifying factor for Montgomery County, that we aren't competing, but we're working together. And I think by looking at the contributions, where we're contributing equal amounts, we're recognizing the importance and the significance of a regional approach, and really appreciate all the work that the Montgomery County Action Council has put in for Montgomery County and Independence, Coffeyville, Caney, and Cherryville, to bring industry and to reach out, to market our county, to other parts of the country. And thank you, Jim, for your time.
Well, thank you for your consideration, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim.
And we appreciate what you've done, too, so thanks.
Thank you, Jim. All right, next up, the, excuse me, Independence Public Library. Tom, how are you?
Pretty good.
Excuse me.
My name's Tom Sewell, and I'm the treasurer for the public library. And I want to thank the commissioners for inviting us here this evening to go over the budget. I'm not going to spend much time going over it. I think you've got it in front of you. The main thing is, we're not asking for any increase in funding. We're asking to keep the same funding that we've received in the prior years. And I think most of you, I wasn't prepared or really haven't prepared anything as far as our achievements over the year, but I think most of you are aware of what the library does and how active we are. Compared to other city libraries that we're aware of in the communities around Independence, we're probably the most active that I know of. And we do perform a lot of programs and support a lot of the participants and the members here in the City of Independence, and give them a lot of options for different programs. So I don't really have anything else, and I'll probably have the shortest presentation of the three. And if there's any questions, I'll try to answer any of those things. But we certainly appreciate the funding the city provides to the Independence Library.
Thank you, Tom. The library, as you mentioned about other libraries, it's a quality-of-life facility, and I'm glad to see that we're expanding the uses of it. It's there for a purpose, that we're able to have all these additional programs that we bring to the community, that people of all ages can come in and participate and take part in. So it's a quality-of-life facility, but it's greatly enhanced by the programs that you present. And it draws a lot of people, so it's continually used of the facility, which makes it great because there's nothing worse than having a facility that is limited by this or that, and it's really underutilized. But that's not the case with our public library. So thank you, and to the staff, Jerry, and everyone involved with the Independence Public Library.
I think Jerry's direction has made the big difference as far as the use of the library and all the programs they had. I know they had to shut down pretty much during COVID, but they kept going as much as they could and doing as much as they could, you know, through the programs.
And Tom, I think it's important that you mention that the library is open and fully functioning at this point in time, so that it's as available as it has always been to those who want to go take advantage of its services there. So drop by. If you haven't been by in the library in a while, please go back and see what they've got going on.
I was surprised how many people kept asking, when's the library going to open back up?
Yeah.
And I think that was really an indication of how broad of reach the library has. And I notice, even when you're closed, the number of cars sitting outside connecting to your Wi-Fi, that, you know, it's more than a building, but actually a service that you're providing to all aspects of the community. And we're really fortunate to have the dedicated staff and the involvement of the volunteers to see that Independence is being reached in this area. So thank you, Tom. Don't have any questions concerning your budget. It looks good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, slide.
Thank you, Tom. All right, item four, public hearing.
One question concerning. I understand that we're not going to take action tonight, but this will be discussed when we go over our budget? Or do we need to make a ruling tonight?
No, it'll be when you adopt your budget.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure that if we needed any other discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing. A public hearing to consider condemnation of 505 North 24th Street as dangerous and unsafe. Tyler?
So 505 North 24th Street was involved in a structure fire early May, like May 6th, and I have received no contact from family members of the owner.
The structures, by the pictures, are pretty much nothing there.
Yeah, the house was destroyed, yes.
Okay. Do we have a rough idea what it's going to cost to demo this?
I would imagine it's going to probably be around $4,000 or $5,000. Wait, if you guys approve the condemnation tonight, there's still a 30-day wait period, and then we'll go out and get some bids for you.
Okay. Okay.
Now, these are strange, pardon me, these are kind of strange times in terms of communication with COVID still impacting some of our abilities to get around and get out and such like that. Are you confident, do you have good contact information for the family members, since you have not received any communication at all?
It's the only form of contact that I've received from.
We're familiar with the family, and we definitely will reach back out to them over the next 30 days.
Okay.
To ensure that they're aware of, they're aware of what's going on, but we'll make sure that they have no intentions for the property or the structure.
Please. Thank you.
The owner did perish in the fire.
Yes.
So there will be a legal process to go through to condemn it? Is that correct?
I don't know, Dan. Is there any further, other than what we're doing condemnation-wise?
If the council believes that this is dangerous and unsafe, it is an expedited process with regard to notice requirements, especially if the commission finds that it can cause danger to the community for people wandering in that structure. So essentially, the council will have to find that those traits exist on the residents, and then that gives the ability to expedite the process rather than notice and publication requirements per statute.
In the case of this house, since there's no action going to be taken, and it is an imminent danger to people in the neighborhood or anyone wandering, it is a good case to expedite instead of go through the standard process.
And that would be an analysis that your public safety officer would come through, and if he's recommending that this is dangerous and unsafe, then I would recommend the council abide by or adhere to that recommendation.
Is that at a separate meeting, or is that right now?
That can happen right now.
So then, I guess, my question would be, what is the recommendation from staff? Expedite or go through the standard process?
My recommendation would be to expedite it.
We can do that. We can get you some bids, and would you like to see the bids, or would you like us to just go ahead and get it taken care of, get our three quotes, and follow our process that we have with Lacy? Or we can bring it back on the 12th?
Commissioners, I hate to make a decision to bid without opening it up to others to make sure that we get the most competitive bid, but two weeks or the next commission meeting would bring it along a lot quicker than the standard notification.
We can definitely get something out this next week, and they're good about, they usually can return something within a few days.
So is the resolution, as indicated here, 2021-021, the standard verbiage, or is it the expedited verbiage?
That's it. That's the expedited version, so.
Awesome. So it sounds like we're good to go.
Okay, great. Great. If there's no further questions, then entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-021 condemning 505 North 24th Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Do I have a second?
The resolution, doesn't the resolution set a date for a public? I was just looking at this real quick.
Let me see if I can, okay, see what I got here.
Okay, sorry, quick sidebar.
Kelly, we have a motion that hasn't been seconded for waiting for confirmation that there is a date involved within the resolution.
Mr. Reynolds can comment on that.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Well, the resolution says that hereby given 30 days from the publication of this resolution, from which to commence such repairs and removal of the premises. So is that the correct resolution, or should it mean that the resolution is for immediate receipt of bids for removal of the property?
Once the commissioner or the public safety officer deems it to be dangerous and unsafe, such as that it's a danger to the community, the council can either go with either option. There's, it doesn't require you to immediately bulldoze or remove the property, but it gives you the option if it's, if that option is available, or if you're comfortable with the bids. Or alternatively, you can also go with the resolution as it's stated, which is basically give it 30 days and then act. Does that make sense? Basically, it waives notice requirements with regard to individuals that may have a property interest in that residence. It has nothing to do with your action.
So what we would be doing is not adopting this resolution with 30 days, but we'd be authorizing to proceed with action to condemn, to remove the property.
Hence, my question was whether this resolution had the verbiage for the expedited action within it. And so apparently, what you're saying is that it has a delay of 30 days within it.
Yeah.
And therefore, this is not the resolution we would be making if we want expedited action.
That's correct, yes.
I rescind my motion.
I make a motion that, on the recommendation of the city inspector, that we proceed with action necessary to remove the property immediately.
That legally?
Yeah, if your public safety officer indicates that it's a danger to the community such that it will cause harm, then the council can move forward in identifying it's dangerous and unsafe, such to the point that notice requirements statutorily can be waived, and you can proceed with bids to remove the blight or remove the dangerous qualities, which is the house. So.
And based upon the recommendation of the city building inspector, that the property is declared dangerous and unsafe, and that we proceed with removal, receiving bids for removal of the property?
Okay, so that is the motion. Did you get that, David?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
As I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you for pointing that out, because I saw 30 days, too. Okay. To item five, items for commission action. Item A, consider request from Ruth Overfield to purchase her home at 523 East Cedar Street. Ruth, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you, gentlemen. Kelly? Okay, you all have letters and notes and pictures and everything of my property. It says on a creek. It's been established by, when I applied for a grant, and it was inspected, and the inspector told me, and also April Nutt told me, that the house sat on a huge creek. The creek was coming from the northeast and going out the southwest part of the property. Also, Phil of S E K Construction told me, when he put in French drains, that the water was underneath the French drains, rising. It's now risen to the surface underneath the house. You have all the information. I don't feel that I can sell the house. I bought a junk piece of property 24 years ago, turned it into a nice house. It's a nice old piece of property, but I don't think it's safe to live in. When you lay in your bed at night and feel yourself dropping, there's something going on that's serious. The appraisal is low. I had talked to Kelly about a bird sanctuary. Tear the house down, mow the yard, go let people go to go to the birds. That was my suggestion. No money spent. I don't know what to do with it. The water is not city, is not water from the drains or anything. It is water without chlorine in it. So since you already have all the information, I'm not going to take up a whole lot of your time. I don't know what to do. I'm open for suggestions from you gentlemen.
Yeah, I've read through the all, the information that you sent to each one of us, that was given to each one of us here, and there's just a lot of issues here with this. I'll be honest with you, I don't, I'm not so sure what I would do myself if I was the owner of the property. There's a lot of, there's several areas in town where we have under spring water underneath the ground that goes under some of the facilities, probably not to the extent that where it's causing damage like this, but.
Yeah, we're talking about 40 feet wide here. Yeah, my house sits right on top of it.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm familiar with the neighborhood, so.
I was never told when I bought it that it was set on the spring, you know? We have to give that information. I don't think it's sellable. I don't think if I told anybody, my house, this is on top of a water spring that's 40 feet wide, and it's now surfacing, that anybody's going to buy the house. You know, I've had the construction company, I got the loan, they come in and did work and everything, but it's still sinking, and the water is still rising.
Well, looking at it, as far as us as a commission, I can't recommend that we buy residential property for individual houses. I recognize your problem and see your concern, too, but as... I recognize your problem and see your concern too, but as, as a city, I think our, our action is, is limited in this case. That, you know, there's, if it was runoff from our work or our drainage, we could help, but our hands are tied.
Come and watch the runoff from the house that runs between the house and the garage after four inches of rain last Saturday. That's a big problem too. I can show you pictures. I have them on my camera. But that's not the main problem. The main problem is the house is, is on an open creek.
I'm so sorry for your situation.
Yeah, me too.
Of course.
I mean, I've paid taxes for twenty-four years on the house, you know? I buy independence, I sell independence, I work independence.
Yes, yes.
Yep, I'm sorry. There's just, the circumstances are something you were unaware of so many years ago. And it's come to this. But I, I don't see where we're going to be able to, to help you on this.
I, I understand. I already know that there was a recommendation by the, uh, Kelly and David and whoever does that not to buy it, so.
Sure, sure.
Sure, I know.
Okay. I appreciate you taking the time to give us the information and coming here to speak.
So you guys will be getting it in taxes, I guess, in three years. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, gentlemen, um, I entertain a motion on item A.
I'm moved to deny the request to purchase the property at five twenty-three East Cedar Street.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, item B, consider authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the Independence Area Public Library.
This is, uh, agreement that, um, actually Lacy kind of instigated and, and has been working with just to kind of, with the city attorney to further, um, delineate, um, what the city's responsible for and what the library's responsible for since it's a city-owned building. There were some things I, I sent a copy to you that one of the commissioners found that we need to ask Jeff about and since he's not here, I would just suggest we table this and, and look at that again and make sure we've got the, everything addressed.
I can make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead, Dean.
I move we table the authorization of the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Independence and the Independence Area Public Library.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item C, consider approving the Kitty Land restroom design.
Mayor, uh, the architect BG consultants submitted, uh, two options for the Kitty Land. Kelly and I had this go to the park board and to the park staff and staff has looked at it too and they like option two. Also, uh, at the park board meeting, Andy Taylor was there with the Lions Club and was also able to give some input into it since it is in Kitty Land and he preferred option two. So we're coming to you guys tonight, uh, to seek your input. Once we get that, we will get it back to the architect and then they will be able to do the, finish up and get us some cost estimates and start working towards final plans so we can go out for bids on this project.
And they just felt with this being in Kitty Land, it needed to meet the themes that were kind of going after kind of a gingerbread type house look.
Which is consistent with Kitty Land.
And we just like that south elevation option, which kind of looks back towards, you know, you got, have a window and the door and all. It just, they just felt that option was going to be the best that they could do in that area to make it look good.
It is a black and white sketch, of course, so it's hard to tell, but it does look like an attractive structure and if, if there's no substantial cost difference between the two options, uh, I don't have a preference otherwise.
One of the, the features of option two, it's got a, um, a youth-sized toilet.
Yeah.
And the, but it is a little bit bigger building appears to allow for that. I think in the, in the location, a family bathroom with a youth toilet will be really convenient.
Yeah.
And is definitely a better option. The, uh, the only suggestion maybe, you know, since the distance between the toilet and the sink, the youth toilet, it's, seems a little close to me.
Yep.
I don't know if, even if you had to add a little width to the building, it seemed like it would be better that, you know, to assist a, a child on the toilet on both sides, it'd be more convenient. But I like that feature over the first option really well.
I will say Andy reminded the, or asked the park board and you guys, uh, making sure that we include, uh, power outlets on the outside and lighting was a big concern too.
Yeah.
And there's also some storage in this that they have requested.
That will help the Lions Club out too.
Okay.
And there's a service sink in there too, isn't there?
Yes.
And that'll be handy for park staff cleaning and working in the area.
Yeah. Great, that'll, uh, complete something that's been needed in that area forever.
Great project. We're looking forward to getting through this and getting it going.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see what the completed project looks like.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, David, quick question. This will not be a cold weather facility, correct? Will this be winterized and, uh, enclosed during the cold months?
It will be available year round, if I remember right. Lacy? Yes, it will be a three hundred sixty-five day bathroom available.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
Many of the, uh, facilities do have to be, uh, closed for the winter and this will not be.
Nope.
Oh, well, that's excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioners, any further questions, comments?
So the heat will be with a, a radiant panel or some unit heater and?
I will make sure, I mean, once they get this, they're going to get into those details.
Yeah.
So it, I'm sure you will see it again. You will see a final. We'll make sure you get it back to you.
Okay.
With that, um, entertain a motion on this.
I move to approve option two by BG consultants for the Kitty Land bathroom project.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item D, consider autho- adopting resolutions authorizing financing for projects and authorizing the sale of bonds. And you are Clayton?
Yes.
Yes. Hi Clayton.
Hi Clayton, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Welcome.
I'm, uh, Clayton, Clayton Kelly with Piper Sandler, uh, financial advisor for the city. Um, and, and tonight, actually, all that will be taken in the, in, as part of the action will be a project authorization to put the projects that are on the list, the various street improvements and the public facility improvements, um, on the capital improvement plan, which at some point in the future, with it being on the capital improvement plan after tonight, would have the ability to be, those projects be reimbursed through a bond issue. Um, so that's kind of the, the scope of the action item tonight. I've also handed out some booklets that I wanted to go through. Um, I'll, I'll be pretty brief with it, but I just think it's a, I, I know you guys are somewhat familiar with, uh, the financing mechanism that we're approaching for this, these projects, but I wanted to give a little bit more in-depth analysis of for it as well. So if you go to, uh, tab one on that booklet, I just wanted to illustrate, uh, where interest rates have gone in the last thirty years. Uh, just really emphasizing, um, when you're going to finance a project, um, at, at, at this time, it's, you're, you're at all-time lows in interest rates. So an absolute, uh, great time to be financing a project when you look at the overall scope just over the last thirty years. Um, if you go to tab two, um, revenues for these projects would, uh, be coming from sales tax revenues and this analysis shows the, the growth of sales tax, um, history and, and our cash flows that I'll be showing later on, uh, we're pretty cautious in what we show for, for growth. The, the city has actually collected over the last ten years, has had about a two percent, um, sales tax growth. Um, over the last three years, it's been four percent and I think this year, um, it's growing around four to five percent compared to the previous year as well. So just kind of keep that into perspective as we go through these pages is everything that we're showing in the future and our cash flow analysis only assumes, um, actually half a percent, uh, growth going forward. So, um, that, the next page after that is projected, um, bond issues. We like to try to get an idea of with your outstanding debt service that's attributable to these sales tax, how does future projects fit in from a cash flow perspective? And these, this analysis, if you look at it from the far left, um, that's the total one percent sales tax, which we understand that a portion of that is paying outstanding debt service. There's also that quarter percent that's automatically transferred to the general fund every year and then there's other projects in between that you want to have the ability to fund, um, pay-as-you-go projects. So, um, as you can see, it, the, there's really no issue from a overall, uh, sales tax standpoint. And what I'll get into here in a second is, and, and why we're coming up with a particular financing for this, is the, the allocation of, um, a particular set of the sales tax and how it fits in with existing debt service. So the, the sales tax will renew at the end of twenty twenty-two and while that sales tax is renewed with different sales tax allocations, there's still outstanding debt related to ADA improvements that don't fall off until twenty twenty-six of about three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and this is shown in tab three. And I think this is the sheet that you guys are most familiar with looking at budget-wise. But what you'll notice, those, on, on tab three, it's, I, I apologize, it's pretty small font, but those, uh, bottom three to four rows will show your excess funds that are available for street and public facility improvements. Um, and, and really what you notice is, and it's kind of highlighted in red there for some of those projects and those allocations, until that debt falls off in, in twenty twenty-seven, that's allocated right now to ADA improvements, you kind of have three hundred thousand dollars a year that you already have to have debt service payments on for those outstanding payments. So it more or less creates, um, a, a, a tightening of the available use of those revenues for that period. And so one way to get around that, um, restriction in our cash flows for those, um, for those debt service payments or those future debt service payments is through what we call a general obligation temporary note. And essentially what that does is it allows the city to finance those projects today or whenever you decide to do it. And so you're receiving funding for those projects. You're not having to make a payment on that for up to four years, at which point between when you finance it and four years from then, you are able to roll that into a long-term general obligation bond. So it's very similar to a general obligation bond in all the ways. It's just shorter and you have the ability to not have to make a principal payment on it for up to four years. So that really helps you, sorry, go ahead.
A question on that. With the temporary general obligation bond, is it guaranteed the same way that a regular bond is with adware and property tax?
Yep, the exact same security. It's just the structure of it, um, is the only thing that is different.
Okay, so that makes it all legal when we tie it back to the adware and property tax?
Exactly, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so, um, so that was a part of the discussion with Lacy and, um, bond counsel. That was a, a, a financing mechanism that was brought up and is actually, uh, really helps out the city situation in this particular scenario just to try to get through those first three or four years after that sales tax gets renewed. And then I, I provided some detail on the numbers if you're interested on tab four. Um, I won't go through those tonight. I also know that on tab five, there was some discussion of, with us being in all-time low interest rates right now, are there any other refinancing opportunities, uh, for the city? And, um, as of, as of right now, the series twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen bonds don't provide savings, um, as a taxable refinancing, which is the only mechanism that is allowed until those twenty fifteen bonds become currently callable in July of next year. So we ran the analysis updated with taxable rates just to see if there's any improvement in savings at this point. Currently, there's not. However, we have seen US Treasuries in the last couple of weeks, which is what the index base for taxable rates is based off of. It has dropped a little bit. If that continues to drop, we'll just continue to evaluate this to see if it becomes a better opportunity. But as of right now, the, the best opportunity is still to wait until that tax-exempt refinancing opportunity is available next year on the twenty fifteen bonds. And then final tab, tab six here is just a calendar of events. So just to re, kind of repeat and recap, uh, the action item tonight simply authorizes these projects that are listed to be at one point in the future reimbursed through financing of a general obligation temporary note or general, general obligation bond. There is no sale, um, resolution tonight for, for a general obligation bond issue. Um, if, if you decide to proceed tonight with the reimbursement resolution for projects, which is what tonight is, then we'll come back in September and consider adopting a resolution to authorize the sale, uh, for the general obligation bonds. And then that allows typically, once we have that resolution, that really gets the ball rolling and, um, we can usually close on financing about two months after that date. And so with that, um, that's, that's all I had tonight and I'd be happy to take any questions.
I had a question on the resolution where it has, uh, it's in section two, the bond authorization. It gives a description and the estimated cost. It has, uh, public, uh, facility improvements in italics with no cost figure, but then in exhibit A, it has cost figure for that line item. Is, uh, is that supposed to be there or?
Yeah, so it's, it's more or less a subcategorization of those projects. So for the first description that you're showing, that's in italics, um, you'll notice there's a street improvement, italics kind of a little bit before that and it's more or less just categorizing that those are street projects and then that one is a, a public.
I, I was confused because we were talking about another bond for public facility improvements. So it was the same title and I thought it was a carryover.
Yep.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It looks good to me. I'm excited for these projects to, uh, get underway. There'll be a big improvement for the city of Independence and this financing is the appropriate way, I think, approach, uh, funding the projects, especially because of the opportunity for short-term financing and the, uh, really very, uh, very good rates on, uh, financing at this point in time.
Yep, I'm excited to see us moving forward on these projects that they've been contemplated for a long time. Been able to see that we've been able to, uh, move forward on this and looking forward to the start dates on these projects so we can see the improvements. I think the community will be proud when this is all finished, uh, be happy with the improvements, so.
Well, we've been fortunate to receive a substantial number of grants from KDOT that reduced our out-of-pocket cost for significant project improvements. That the, the bond is an ideal way to allow us to go ahead and the, uh, cost share for replacement of maple. cost share for replacement of Maple Street, uh, from, uh, what is it, railroad tracks to, uh, Peter Pan Road. Um, we talked a few years back about, uh, milling and overlay, but the base is bad and we would just be spending more money to maintain something that is not going to be improved, but through our KDOT grant, we're able to do a significant improvement to eliminate any problems. And excited about the Central Park Sports Complex, a great improvement for children and children of the future, the soccer fields, the new baseball fields, and this is a way we can really see that happen. Appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then just the, the action item tonight, I don't, the resolution, I don't know if you have it in front of you to, tonight if you wanted to move forward, so, okay.
Okay.
I'm ready to make that motion.
All right. Thank you Clayton.
Thank you.
All right, uh, go ahead Commissioner Hayes.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one zero two-two authorizing and providing for improvements included in the multi-year capital improvement plan for the city of Independence, Kansas, and providing for the payment of the costs thereof.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item E, consider recommendation from McAllen Gordon to seek bids to address the nineteen sixteen City Hall ventilation and water issues. Vance?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can, we can hear you. You're up.
Good, all right. Well, thank you. Um, I, I am here to present, uh, information that's been provided by McAllen Gordon, the, uh, con- construction manager on the project. And if you remember at the last meeting that we were, we attended in June twenty-fourth, McAllen Gordon, uh, was in, in front of the commission asking for confirmation on whether you would like the waterproofing package to be moved forward um, in, and have that work accomplished prior to the general, uh, rehabilitation of the building. And the commission felt like that that was a, a good move, uh, a good decision to, to make. And so what McAllen Gordon has done is they have prepared for you an order of magnitude that they believe is reasonable that addresses a waterproofing system, a foundation, foundation drainage system that will, um, help make sure that the exterior foundation wall, um, of the historic city hall is dry. They have provided, uh, cost information that not only is derived from their database, but also working with subcontractors to talk about the, the project and, uh, products that could be used. The system that, that they are proposing is a system that they have used on other buildings where owners are wanting to make sure that the lower level of their building is dry. And so what you have is, um, uh, w- proposed work that would excavate down to the bottom of the footing or a little bit below the, the top ledge of the footing so that the, um, new waterproofing, new drainage tile could be included. The waterproofing would be a, uh, modern system that would be trialed on. But it also is a system that includes then a betonite panel system that would go over. So, in a way, this is, um, a, a system that I would classify as trying to make sure that these perimeter walls that are stone, they are sandstone, um, have the ability to, um, avoid the water coming back into the, to the building. There's also drainage, uh, mat system that will be placed over the top of it. And then the, uh, system drains to a sump pump system, um, out, out to grade in order to, uh, handle the water. Now, uh, as McAllen Gordon has prepared this, they have included a graphic to try to convey or show the extent of the waterproofing system that runs around the perimeter. Uh, the waterproofing is shown, um, outside of the area ways on the drawing that's on the screen. And the reason that why it's shown that way is that, uh, we have talked about as part of the rehabilitation project that those area ways could and should, uh, become interior space so that a skylight system would protect that area way from taking on more water. That is a source of, uh, one of the sources of the water problems that we have within the building. And so what McAllen Gordon has done is given you a graphic, um, uh, drawing to show you the extent of the waterproofing system as it moves around the building. There are certain challenges that, uh, they are facing or we are facing as a, as a team and certainly one is on the west elevation, we have, um, existing wing walls and foundation systems that uh, allow people to, uh, enter the lower level of the building under the main entrance. And so the waterproofing system will start and stop at those foundation walls. It will continue under the main entrance of the building, um, over to the other wing wall where it will stop and that it will pick up on the south side of that and, and work its way around, uh, around the building. So what they are asking for and the information that they provided is, uh, the ability to uh, actually go out and, and bid the work, uh, work with the subcontractors to get hard and fast numbers to be able to present to the city commission. And, um, so they, uh, unfortunately Travis Huffman with McAllen Gordon wasn't available to be there to present this information and he asked me to do the best I could to convey to you, uh, what we're looking at here. So that's the waterproofing system. Um, their next component is dealing with uh, a longer term but temporary, uh, solution to try to dry out the masonry on the interior of that lower level. For years, we've been having water in or through the, the foundation system. Um, as McAllen Gordon came out and they used their non-destructive tools, um, they were able to identify that the walls are still moist. Um, and so we worked with our mechanical engineer to develop a, a system that allows us to pull warm air, um, out of the building and exhaust that warm air outside the building so that the walls can dry at a faster rate than if we were to just include the new waterproofing. Um, uh, we would still have a lot of moisture within those walls. And we want the walls dry before we actually start, uh, the rehabilitation work and the interior finish work and in the lower level. So those are the two documents that you have with you. They have costs associated, uh, associated, uh, with it. Again, it's an order of magnitude. It's, it's not a hard and fast bid, but it's where they believe the cost will probably fall as they go out and, and work with subcontractors. So I'm here to answer any questions and that you may have or do the best job I, I possibly can.
On that, I see they've given us a, a, a low range and a high range and they've settled in the middle of two eighty-five oh seventy-eight.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, so, take it into factors.
I had a question about on, uh, no, I guess there's not a number. It says that existing waterproofing is coal tar. Pricing will need to be adjusted to accommodate the additional labor required. Well, it, we know it's not coal tar. So.
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Keplich, you, you're correct. What McAllen Gordon was trying to note is that, uh, based on information that we have in the file, it's a, a cora, uh, trial on or roll-on waterproofing. Um, but th- they are trying to make sure that if they encounter, um, older waterproofing that may be on the wall, they want it compatible with the new system. And so if something is uncovered and unknown, they just wanted to make sure that the commission knew that it would probably have to be addressed before the new uh, WR Meadows hydroelastic fluid applied waterproofing was installed.
Okay, 'cause one of the things with the removing, are they, are they going to do a test to see if the material will be able to be removed? I guess I'm afraid of a, a high change order that we want to clean the wall that the material is elastomeric, so it's tight, so sandblasting becomes difficult, that we get into starting the project and then find out now we've got an additional fifty to a hundred thousand dollar labor to try and remove the, the system. Is it flexible enough that once it's excavated, that they can do a test to see if the Meadows material is compatible to apply over the existing or is this definitely going to be, uh, a total removal back to stone if it's, you know, like?
Mm-hmm. So Commissioner, my understanding is that, uh, they were looking at removing the existing system. Uh, they did talk to us about the investigation area that we did at the northwest corner on the north facade. And when we excavated down, of course, we did not go all the way down to the, to the footing, but when we excavated down, we did find that we could peel the existing waterproofing system, which is a thirty-year-old system now.
Right.
Um, off of the sandstone. And so they, they are anticipating that the majority of it can actually be removed. Um, but I, I can, I cannot say for certain whether the WR Meadows product can be applied um, over, uh, the older system that, that's there. We can, we can confirm that though.
Okay, good. I just, you know, we ran into, uh, potential for like a forty-seven thousand dollar change order on the windows and just kind of preparing ourselves for where we might be looking to consider all the unknowns that if there could be a fluctuation in what we're, we're seeing as costs. Okay, that one other item on the ventilation, I know you're removing some windows to draw air from the east side of the first floor in the basement, the old mechanical room and uh, on the southeast corner are closing up, uh, the existing door. Would it be beneficial to install louvers in those two openings to pull air from those dead air spaces that the duct work is not going to be as positive draw back in there?
Um, I, we did mention that to the mechanical engineer as, as well as an option. He, he, uh, thought conceptually he is actually trying to pull air from other floors of the building down. And so, um, on an upper, on the first floor level, he's actually looking at trying to pull air through, so we would have to, um, open up and, and remove the windows um, and pull air from the building down through the lower level. So that was his preference, but um, we, as, as part of this, we can go back to him and suggest again that we look at that, those, um, temporary partitions that are in there and actually pull air through that area way. His concept is that he wants to pull as warm of air as he can adjacent to these masonry walls to aid in, in the drawing of, of the walls.
Those two rooms have a high moisture level in it, the old mechanical room. Uh, and I think since they're adjacent to the apparatus bay, just make sure that we get those dried out as well to their kind of unique spaces with, um, potential moisture problem. And this would be remaining throughout construction?
Right, so the, the system that, that we have, um, for the ventilation, the idea is that it certainly, uh, gets installed as soon as possible so that we can start the drawing process, that it would remain until the work in the lower level um, requires it to be, um, removed. And so the idea is sequencing the construction as it stays as long as it can. McAllen Gordon has mentioned, of course, in the, in the past that, that they'll monitor the wall. They'll check the moisture with, using their moisture meters, um, where it is and, and how it's drawing, so they'll be able to, uh, provide updates on it.
That'd be great. Okay.
Vance, on those sump pumps that you, you, you talked about earlier, um, and I may be jumping the gun on this, but um, at some point in time, when they're all connected together, I had asked that, um, there'll be, um, an alarm or an indication of some sorts if, if something trips that would notify that the sump pumps are no longer working, that we would have an alarm or something set up that we would be, uh, be notified of that rather than, uh, having to seek why. So is that still part of the process?
Yes, that'll be, still be part of the process. Um, Mr. Mayor, we will be removing, um, um, some of the sump areas that are in the building, so we'll be reworking inside the building. Uh, the one on the outside at the southwest corner outside the building is the one that captures the, the foundation drainage system. And so all, all of the sums that we'll have can be set up so that the city does receive an alarm notification when there is a problem. But there will be reworking of the sump pumps.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, good evening Vance, this is Commissioner Hayes.
Good evening.
So, uh, I'm backing up just a little bit, so, uh, uh, forgive me, but do we understand the nature of the underground water that is getting into, um, the lower level, the basement of the nineteen sixteen city hall building? Do we know where it's coming from?
So, that's a good question Commissioner. Um, and as we've talked in the past, we have been trying to address concerns of the building that we could certainly see. So above ground, we knew we had roof leaks. We knew we had, um, openings in masonry walls. We knew the windows were leaking. So we knew moisture was getting in the building through those components and those have been addressed as part of phase one. What we didn't know and what we didn't want to do is disturb the, the foundation waterproofing system, even though it was old. We didn't want to disturb it too much if it was functioning. And so the first step was to button up the exterior up high this, so that we could then monitor the waterproofing. We've now determined that that system does have a, a breach or a number of breaches in it because we are seeing water, um, along the south wall, especially in the southwest corner. We see it on the west wall and even on the north wall. Um, so the waterproofings, we know we also now need to replace the waterproofing system. But your question is a good one. Um, in that, um, if you remember, we have talked about, uh, geotechnical investigation that is typically undertaken on projects, especially when we're doing additions or new construction. And what we talked with McAllen Gordon about is that, um, this is an opportunity as part of that geotechnical work to help design the footing and the foundation to also look at, um, uh, i- i- installing a, what's called a piezometer, um, system that will allow us to monitor the groundwater that may be around the building or even under the building. Um, when McAllen Gordon did their, uh, mo- took their moisture meters and their infrared, uh, camera system, the floor was not wet in the basement. So we, we aren't seeing hydrostatic pressure pushing up. But we are still seeing a lot of moisture. And so the question we still have in our mind is do we have a high water table or do we have, uh, water that is trying to flow around the building, potentially even under the building? So, as part of that geotechnical work, the scope that will help, uh, write for the city, um, we believe there may be value in looking at including a piezometer, uh, test.
And that test result would be available to us when?
So that, uh, now that we have the approval of this So that, now that we have the approval of this schematic design back at your June 24th meeting, we now know where additions are currently planned. So that allows us to move forward with the geotech scope and work at any time, and it would allow us to also include this piezometer test that I mentioned. So it will be done well before the renovation, and that way we can watch the, the fluctuation of the water level if we encounter water.
I'm very anxious to see those results, as I have some concerns about the plan thus far. Let me, let me turn our attention to those concerns, if you will. There are three particular areas here that aren't, aren't addressed by the plan, that I, I wanna make sure that we, we cover this evening. First of all, the, um... The walls that are causing the interruption in the waterproofing on the west wall, you called them legs, or what did you call them?
Wing, yeah, wing walls that are retaining walls.
The wing walls. And so there is, there is potential for water infiltration during, in those gaps. Am I correct?
So there is always a potential, Commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, with waterproofing systems, we expect that they are able to terminate the waterproofing at a vertical location like this, that would prohibit water seeping in around that system. And it's pretty common for us in projects, when you encounter something like a wing, wing wall, foundation retaining wall, not to waterproof it, not to go all the way around it, because it may not, may not serve a purpose and may not be worth the dollars to it. And that's where we certainly depend on the waterproofing installation to look at that termination of where the waterproofing system stops and starts.
So that's still kind of up for a rework, should the inspection prove to be beneficial, or should the addition of the waterproofing around the wing wall to be beneficial based on visual inspection, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Two other sources of potential water infiltration are listed here as items not included. One is the waterproofing provisions for any potential groundwater at basement slab-on-grade. So the slab of the basement floor is on, on grade, and there is the potential for water infiltration through the slab, but we are not attempting to waterproof the slab itself.
That's a, that's another good question. We talked with McAllen Gordon about whether we had hydrostatic pressure, a high water table that may be forcing water up through the existing concrete slab. But their non-destructive test showed that that floor slab is not wet, is not absorbing moisture. One solution that we had a thought of early in the design was that we might have to have an interior foundation drainage system going to a sump if we had hydrostatic pressure. So we're not anticipating that that is a location for a breach, but again, it allows us to monitor, and with the equipment that McAllen Gordon has, that's something that we can make that determination before the renovation work actually starts.
And you did have the elevator pit that was installed, and you can find out information how much water came in when they excavated for the elevator pit, 'cause it's four feet below the basement floor. And if there wasn't water intrusion, there was a problem when they excavated, then there's probably not water table under the basement floor slab.
That's, that's correct. And that lower section, that elevator pit, does have, was designed with drain tile and a sump as well. So that is the lowest or deepest portion of, of the foundation system.
And that drainage system around the elevator pit to its sump pump provides relief from any accumulation of water beneath the basement floor slab, so there's really not much chance since their testing equipment showed that the slab wasn't retaining water or having a water problem. And the elevator pits there, and it's probably relieving if there was any pressure, it's being relieved by that. And since the elevator pump has been working, you would know if there's any accumulation or excessive moisture in the elevator pit. I believe there are two pumps, one for oil and one for water.
Right, that is, that is correct, Commissioner.
So when we say the sump pump in the elevator pit is working and it is pumping water, do we have a measure of the flow of water that is, is being removed? Is there any way to measure how much water is accumulating and needing to be removed from the elevator pit?
We do not, Commissioner. We, we haven't been able to monitor the flow of that water. And I would have to, boy, I would have to look and see how we would go about doing that. So that's a good question that I would have to go back and, and look at.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the next one, which is waterproofing provisions for the east elevation of the basement level. That is the east wall, and it, it actually shows a slight wraparound at the corners north and south along the east wall. I don't know how you're accomplishing that wraparound. Do you see what I'm talking about there?
Yes, I, I do. And, and that is a result, that wraparound corner that you mentioned, both at the north and on the south, wraps around that area way. So the area-
I see.
...projects out past the building. But if you look at the drawing associated to the, to the left there, you'll see that we have a slab-on-grade historic apparatus bay. And then to the east of that is the 1960s apparatus bay addition. So we have two slab-on-grades at higher elevations that are approximately fifty-two, almost fifty-three feet from the east basement wall to the east wall of that 1960s foundation for the apparatus bay. So we did talk with McAllen Gordon about, is there a need to excavate within the building, within the historic apparatus bay, and install waterproofing? And that's where our conversation turned to the value of the dollars being spent. What's the return on the investment? And, and that's where we really did conclude that it may be best for a geotechnical investigation to show us, tell us whether there are water issues under those slabs. So that, Commissioner, to me, is something that the geotech work would tell us, whether we need to do that or not. What we could ask McAllen Gordon to do is, as an add-alternate, to go ahead and bid excavation and waterproofing using the same system inside the building along the east wall of the basement, so that you have a number from the contractor who's doing the work. But the geotechnical investigation may show you that it's, it's not the issue, and you shouldn't spend the dollars to do that work.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Since we're gonna have a waterproofing company working with perimeter drains, would it be advisable to look at a French drain on the east side of the 1960s building? Because the, the grades is significantly lower than adjacent property. There's a walkway, so anything east of our property drains into that area. And a French drain that, that drained either into the sump or opened air would help prevent any water going under the slab.
All right, I think that's an excellent suggestion. And, and as McAllen Gordon and I walked the site and, and looked at where water issues might be, we also identified that as a concern from the, the county property. Everything does flow to that sidewalk, and, and in fact, that sidewalk does have areas that have opened up and collapsed, and currently is allowing water to drain under the sidewalk. Now, whether it's going under the footing of the foundation system or not, we don't know. So we would like to see that work occur, but once we receive the survey, so we have received the draft survey of, for both projects, the building is basically on that property line, that east property line. So the city would have to get permission from the county to, to be able to have that French drain system. But Commissioner, I think that's an excellent idea, and we, we would like to see that happen.
And that could be put in as a add-alternate? So we just-
Yes.
-get our bases covered now?
And that, that would, that work, Commissioner, I would actually anticipate would be part of the site work as part of the overall rehabilitation, and it would not have to be as part of the waterproofing system at this time. Because we will be reworking the site, we need to create accessible entrances now on the south side of the building. So there's gonna be a lot of rework, concrete work, and that would allow us to do that sidewalk on the east side of the 1960s apparatus bay at that time. That was our thinking, anyway.
And change the elevation, so it does drain?
Yes. Yes.
And that would happen at the time of the general grade and, and exterior dirt work, correct?
That's what we were thinking, that's what we were recommending. If, if that's something that, I, I would hate to do the work prior to the civil engineer coming up with all the solutions upgrading around the building, because there's a lot of design work that we still wanna make sure we have resolved. Obviously, the old stable or garage or barn that's on the south, that will be removed as part of this project, and we'll be creating the, the new dispatch center, the hardened shell there. So my fear would be, as far, if we did the French drain, as Commissioner Kuplish has mentioned, if we did it early, my guess is we would get into it and potentially have to rework at least a portion of it because of the new work that's going on.
And potentially, the French drain should run around the hardened shell to keep water from coming under that slab, too.
I agree completely, yes.
So the, the continued conversation then is that there's, if, if there is the study, the geotech study, and we do see water on the east, we will have the add-alternate that we can, could add to the overall scope of the waterproofing project. We don't know about the, the moisture below grade yet, because we don't know the volume of water that's moving from the elevator pit. But the, I believe the pictures that McAllen Gordon took did show moisture along the east wall and in the sub-basement, so there is a way for moisture to get in there right now. And so one of the things that confuses me a little bit about the way this estimate is structured, is that it would seem to me that the exhaust system is fairly independent of the, of the excavation and waterproofing efforts, that you could actually start on it on, much sooner than you would necessarily, and you wouldn't have to wait for the waterproofing to begin, the exhaust system. Did I, do I interpret that correctly?
You did, absolutely did, Commissioner. So that's the advantage of having the construction manager involved in this project, is that they can separate this work, they can get the pricing for the exhaust system. My guess is they may want the pricing for both to come to you as a commission to approve the dollar amount, but then that, that exhaust system work can begin much quicker than the foundation and waterproofing system.
Yeah, I'd expect that, that we would see that independent of the waterproofing, as it is, is an urgent need, actually. So we need to begin to dry that out soon, as the moisture content increases with each day of moisture that we receive. So I would like to see that as a separate item that we could expedite, perhaps.
Okay.
In general, I have, I have a, some significant concern that we're putting hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements into this basement, and, and that we don't have a good feel for what the water infiltration will be after these improvements. So I'm, I'm looking for some assurances that our investment in this basement is not just going to almost immediately begin to deteriorate because of water infiltration from sources that we have not considered, or incomplete work that we have not, have we, we've chosen not to do because of some, maybe a cost prohibitive step, or whether we've just, just missed one of the holes. So I'm concerned that this is, this space itself is, is pop, is, is problem-ridden, and we will not be able to, to deal with it effectively. I'm looking for assurances and guarantees that what these, these steps that we're taking will effectively deal with the water.
And Commissioner, what I, what I can say is that, working with McAllen Gordon, they have taken this extremely seriously. They have looked at using tried and true systems that they have actually installed on other facilities with great success. But both of us did not want to suggest over-designing the system if it's not necessary. And so we have been taking steps to, to try to determine the extent of the moisture issue, where it's coming from, rather than saying we need to do all of this work. And, and so we are trying to watch the City of Independence' budget on this and, and make sure that your money is well-spent, but making sure that, yes, that the system that's being installed certainly addresses the, the current issues within the basement.
I would hope that you could solidify some kind of expectation then in my mind, that, that the problem is solved and that we will not see future damage to our improvements. Looking forward to talking through that.
The system that he's proposing is really two systems, the Meadows and bentonite is an expanding clay, so when moisture comes in contact with it, it, it expands and blocks any migration of moisture. It's used in the bottoms of ponds to seal off water. One thing about the bentonite, when it dries back out with a lack of moisture, when moisture contacts it again, it seals back up. So it's self-healing, where the, the elastomeric characteristics of the Meadows is probably three to four hundred percent. So it's resilient to any movement of the building. And now you've got the, the bentonite, and you set a, a drainage mat which brings water in contact with the bentonite. So the system's pretty foolproof. The, the advantage, like we were talking about the alternate to look at a cost to remove existing floor slab in the apparatus- existing floor slab in the apparatus bay and waterproof that section of basement wall that's now not accessible, that pretty much puts a total envelope around the building. And when the elevator pit was excavated, there was no moisture found in there that they had to pump while they were working. So.
Well, I, Vance is, the mayor, we all have that concern because that was a problem with the facility of water coming into the facility. So I guess as we continue forward with the process, if we identify something that needs to be considered to make a change, then, then that will be brought forward to us to consider. So this is still a fluid process that's evolving, but I'm sure that we will look at everything that could potentially happen and either come up with a solution or something that would correct that and without having to spend an additional huge amount of money. So, but I think we all have that concern. We want it to be, to dry and to function like, like we hope it will.
Yeah, I certainly understand and agree with Mayor.
Gentlemen, any further questions for Vance?
Not on the waterproofing. I got a question about the, the design. I was visiting with Kelly and David, they showed me the sketch of the third floor modification for the elevator with the lobby. When we were, were talking with the chief of police, looked at maybe instead of using the third floor, putting an addition to the north for the evidence storage because of the, you know, the hoistway isn't large enough for a dual-faced elevator and the historic characteristics of the building to try and bring in another entrance to the third floor kind of presents a problem with there. Are you looking at some options to work other than extending the elevator to the third floor?
Yes, yes we are, but I can tell you right now, we are waiting for the structural engineer to get back with us about the, the level of modifications that would be necessary to do that vestibule on the west side of the elevator. That allows that elevator to not be a front and rear door elevator, but maintain it as a front. We need to know the extent of the structural work that might be necessary up there and that way we could compare it to the cost or the other solutions of potentially an addition on the north side of that 1960s apparatus bay or the solution of, does it go on top of the dispatch because that'll be a hardened shell? So Commissioner, we're looking at both, but we, we are waiting for the structural engineer to get back with us about his solutions so that we can work with McCowen Gordon to look at costs.
Would we have to look at the impact on the historic characteristics of the building by any impact of the lobby also? Or the other additions?
So, we certainly do. Everything that we do, we, we want to make sure that we don't jeopardize the strike tax credits on the, on the project. And so the, the nice thing about the building is it does step back. So the west facade is the front facade and the grade is lower at the sidewalk. You'll still see this vestibule addition, but it's not as if it will be something large that will stand out. And we'll be able to look at exterior wall system that blends in with the building. So we're not, we're not concerned about that. We believe we can come up with a design solution that certainly is compatible and is, won't be an issue as part of any kind of review.
Vance, would that affect the skylight though on the second floor?
It, it absolutely does. So yeah, I apologize, I don't have any drawings in, in front of me or with me to share, but if we were to keep, the elevator shaft is large enough to work as a modern front-loading elevator. And so as we come up to that third floor, it actually would open out onto the roof of the city hall portion, the western portion. And that is where the skylight is located. Now we can do the lay light on the interior and maintain that feature on the interior, but that skylight, if this is the option that we ultimately go with, it does mean that that skylight would go away.
We'll have, have the three options to look at then. That'd be, that'll help make the decision and, you know, still looking at historic tax credits and, and everything. So we appreciate you looking at it. That was all the questions I had.
Commissioner Hayes, any further questions?
No, I just wanted to make sure that Vance had an understanding of what additional things we were asking for, which would be a separate quotation for the exhaust system and an add alternate for the east wall waterproofing. Did you get that Vance?
I, I did, yes sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then Vance, thank you for answering questions, providing us with information. And at this point, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve McCowen Gordon to seek bids for the waterproofing and ventilation of 1916 city hall.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you Vance.
Thank you.
All right, item F, consider adopting ordinance number 4367, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the City of Independence and the state of Kansas for the purpose of obtaining a loan in the amount of $3,776,894 for the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund to finance replacement of certain water lines and installation of AMI meters. John?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the normal progression of this particular project. We've reached the point where we have the ability to request the loan from the state. We're right now, I'll skip ahead and I won't cover this one in the public works portion, but right now we're at the 30% design review. That'll actually happen on Monday. Now the design review so far is actually not so much of the advanced metering infrastructure, but of the replacement pipe. And the replacement pipe is going again between 10th and 13th streets and between the railroad and Oak Street. So that's where that, that new water line will go in. One of the things that I saw on the first set of plans that I have challenged the engineering firm, and we'll, we'll go through that on Monday, is to the extent possible, let's get those water lines out from under the street. So if we have a water line failure, then at that point, we don't have to tear up the street in order to fix the water line. There may be cases and, there will certainly be cases where we can't and we have to put it under the street, but to the extent possible, minimizing the infrastructure under the street is something we're very much trying to do. So that's, that's the 30% designer view. The meters themselves, again, that's going to be, you know, 4,400 times going and taking a meter out and putting a new one in, but we also have to make sure that the infrastructure itself works because we, the meters will communicate back, but we have to make sure that that's working. So that's, that's key.
When we go ahead and make these improvements, if we run across lead pipe, will we work that at that point or?
I haven't considered that at this point, but if we have lead pipe on our side, oh, when we replace, when we replace the pipe in the ground, absolutely. When we see, when we see the meter replacement, if we see lead pipe, we will want to take action on that. We absolutely will. At the, at the very least, we would want to note that and so that we have an idea of where in our system that we do have any, you know, legacy lead pipes. And we would note that on the consumer side as well if we saw any evidence of lead pipes.
Okay. But you're thinking that the process will be that if we, if we identified at that point, we would go ahead and replace it on our end? Or that's still up in the air?
Well, the final lead pipe rule hasn't come out yet.
Okay.
That, so we're waiting for federal action. There may even be federal grants associated with that in order to help do that replacement. So that, that program, we don't know what, exactly what it looks like, but we do know it's coming.
Okay. All right, thank you.
When you talk about the, the infrastructure or the technology working for the advanced meter infrastructure, are you talking about having the connectivity issues that some of our internet customers are having right now? Is that going to impact the city's ability to use the meters?
It should, it certainly should not.
Okay, good.
What, there are two different types of advanced metering infrastructure. One of them, the meters report back electronically a couple of times a day. And what they do is they'll say, you know, 500 gallons this morning, 500 gallons this evening. And so there's a continuous running total kept with that type of meter. The nice thing about that type of meter is you, 500 this morning, 5,000 tonight, that'll flip a switch and we will let someone know that, good heavens, there's something broken or, so there's something going on or you're, you know, filling a swimming pool or something. So that's one type of meter. The other type of advanced metering infrastructure is a meter where the meter reader drives by and the electronics within the meter reader's vehicle ping the meter and the meter said, okay, last month I did 5,000 gallons. So there are two different types and the final type has yet to be selected. But that, but that infrastructure would feed to us, very likely not using any sort of cellular technology. It would be using, in the first instance, or sorry, in the second instance, it's mobile technology where the person driving is, is gathering the data or the electronics with them are gathering the data. And the second typically, it looks like their little radio boosters that will boost the signal and essentially create a network of data that would flow back to city hall to, to our servers.
So it wouldn't be dependent upon some third-party provider?
At this point, I don't believe so. I haven't seen a full drawing, you know, network diagram of how the infrastructure's going to look, but it would not. Well, except for, at that point, it has to interface with our billing system. So because the data from the meters should flow seamlessly into our billing system, which, you know, I don't, I don't believe we have those on our servers. I think those are, you know, kind of cloud-based, so.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Jim.
But these metering, they will interface well with our system that we have now, billing system that we have now?
I'm absolutely going to make sure that that happens. And the reason is, and it shouldn't be a problem at all because these, the system that we're using as a city for billing, they've done this before. So this is not, this is not new. But we, we have to have a bulletproof system on this and it shouldn't goof up on day one, so.
Whenever you put in their system, they put collectors up and the meters interface with the collector. So if there's a problem with that collector, then it searches for the next collector that it can find and then all that information goes to a mainframe where that's all downloaded. And they use that drive-by technology in Lawrence many, many years ago when they put in some, I believe it's some apartments, maybe 20,000 meters on a small scale, they did that drive-by technology to read the meters at that point. There won't be a problem with interference from outside sources that would interfere with that being able to ping the meter from a frequency of some other type of communication equipment or something. That would create a problem for that to ping that meter? Is it would it be set on its own a certain frequency or, or?
And I, and I haven't read up on that portion. I'm certainly, it will be set up in its own frequency band.
Okay.
And I imagine it's also a relatively low-power digital signal. So it's either looking for that repeater that sends it back to city hall or it's looking for that truck to come by and ping it and say, hey, wake up and, and tell me how much water's been used.
Okay.
Your 30% review is just on the piping replacement?
Yes.
Okay. So there'll be two projects, one for water line and one for the meter?
It really is.
Okay. So do you know, with the meter, they'll have to replace the meter cover too, won't they? Isn't there an antenna that goes in the cover plate?
I do not know if they'll have to replace the, any portions of the meter vaults at this point.
Is it, is it the same meter or have you got into it to know that we can drive by and read it now and then we can add on the repeaters at a later date or are they two separate types of meters?
I believe those are two different types of meters.
So ideal would be to go with a repeater that gathers the data, but it's dollar, right?
I, I, I really like that option better myself because it, you know, when you talk about the service it provides to our citizens, they would have the ability to in real time, you know, you're on vacation and, oh my gosh, you know, who's using all this water? And that actually has happened to people.
Or if it's 15 below zero and the line freezes and?
Yes.
And breaks and it outs running wild as we had last winter.
Absolutely. And, and this would be a case where the, literally the computer would be telling us where, where the failures were maybe even before the residents noticed.
Well, I hope that we can get the cost in where we can go with the repeater instead of the drive-by. I think that would work much better for your staff. I mean, it gives you an individual to work somewhere else than driving around town in a car.
Yes. But either way, the, the data collection would be much, much faster.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it's worked well for Evergene now. What brand of metering are you looking at?
We do not have, yeah.
Okay, you're looking at several different brands, okay.
And I, I believe this is the case, I can't, that, part of the terms of the loan requires to bid the types of meters.
Okay. I'm a little familiar with Badger is one of the companies. I think they use a system.
Yes.
That's a system Howard uses when they went in and they got grant money and they replaced all their water lines and then they went ahead and put in all new meters, but they were only serving like 800, 800 customers altogether, but so far it's worked great for them also.
And, and one of the things, when we get to those, kind of those final meter manufacturers and systems that we're looking to consider, I'm going to want to talk to references. How well did this work?
Yeah.
And has this worked with our, you know, our current Tyler Technologies software? Do we already have an interface built or are we going to have to build an interface for it? And if that's the, and personally, I, I would like to install a few of these and run a small trial rather than having, you know, let's make sure everything works before we replace everything.
Yes, that's a great idea. We, we found that out when we were going to some of these, well, the metering that Evergene uses now, we went to a vendor and we did a sample and they didn't hold up. So we had to back up and find another vendor and we did and went with them and it worked great, but we, we did a trial period of that and we didn't. went with them and it worked great, but we, we did a trial period of that and we didn't have very good luck with the first manufacturer that we had identified and tried to work with. It just, they just didn't work as well as they were touted to work.
And fortunately here, we're not early adopters. Uh, there are many, many cities have installed, um, the, this type of metering, so, um, we'll have, have the ability to reach out and talk to people.
Good, good. I'm excited to see this take place. Yeah. All right. Any other further questions, gentlemen?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
I'm good. Then I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance four, three, six, seven, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the City of Independence, Kansas and the State of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund for the purpose of financing a public water supply project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and approving certain documents in certain, in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the loan agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Item six, discussion. Discuss the disposition of a lot on East Maple Street adjoining Montgomery County property?
Yes, this is, uh, the one where you vacated, um, where it shows the yellow portion previously. And then the county property, um, on the south side extends beyond that and they were interested in having the rest of the street vacated. One of the commissioners suggested, um, signing the city lot over to them that's directly across the street that has a lift station on it and retaining, uh, utility easements for that entire lot for any utilities or anything that's on that. I sent that to the county. The county staff is going to recommend that they do that. And they are gonna talk about that at their work session on the twenty-sixth, which you will already be there for.
Okay.
Um, but that section will be earlier. I think the, the one on, um, the rescue funds is at nine-thirty and this will be, uh, discussed previous. So I suggest that we'd, and it's in another part too, that we have a special meeting, um, that starts at nine to make sure we're there in case they have any questions of us regarding this.
Okay.
And then once that is done, then we would come back and vacate the rest of that street 'cause they would have ownership on both sides.
Okay. All right. Great. Uh, item seven, reports, uh, public.
Do you need a motion for that special meeting?
Um, I have that in another section, so, uh, under city manager comments. So if you wanna wait until then or? Uh, then we could do that 'cause there's another special meeting we, we are going to need as well.
Thank you.
All right, John, again. All right. Public Works Project Report.
Yes, uh, before I hit, hit the list, I'd like to, uh, if it's all right, um, address just a couple of other items of which there's been interest in the past. Uh, the first is poly carts. Uh, the planned delivery date start is September thirteenth. Um, that, that's on a Monday. Originally, we anticipated it'd take about six weeks or longer for us to deliver those. We did, uh, find that the cart manufacturer offers the service where they will not only drop off the cart, um, but they will also provide us a list of all the serial numbers of each carts tied to each address the cart was dropped off at. Wow. So we'll have an electronic list on day one of where each cart is in the city. So very, very pleased about that. Um, we've been holding a weekly meeting on communications on that and, uh, we'll have another one again tomorrow. Uh, we actually have, uh, examples of communications used from other cities and that, those just showed up this week. Um, I'm very pleased to say that we've, we've hit almost every item that the other cities have hit. But of course, we have, oh, our, our list is very long on the communication at this point. But, uh, because we're giving, using this as a chance to, uh, reach out and talk about sanitation and brush as a general, as a general topic. Downtown, you may notice that the crack seal has been done on some of the core street area. The thing, uh, everything I've been able to find out about crack seal shows that the monies that we've spent so far, um, out of the city's pocket, as you will, would be probably in the range of at least a five or ten times return on investment. And that's just a cash cost. It doesn't talk about the disruption from, uh, having to go through and repave the downtown streets, which is very, very significant on the businesses. So the crack seal has been put in place. We had intended, uh, to follow that up with a whole lot of painting. However, uh, we did find that there is a nationwide shortage of paint. This is tied back, uh, not to COVID, believe it or not, this is tied back to the, uh, winter that we just talked about with the big freeze in Texas. Many of the chemical components used in road paint are, um, just not out there right now. There's at least like kind of a six-month backlog for paint. Yeah. Uh, they have really put everything on restriction and the people who are getting paint right now are the FAA, they can get paint, uh, airports can get paint. And the other people that can get paint are state highway departments for projects that they prioritize. So, um, I would anticipate from everything I've read that it would last several more months. But as soon as we can get paint, we're gonna be out there painting, so. One area we have talked about in the past is the southeast lift station. We have sent off, uh, the larger pumps, um, for analysis and I have some costs back on those. I should have a report. I'm still waiting, uh, from the pumps manufacturer's representative. I'm still waiting to hear some final data from them. Once I get that, I'll have a, a, a full recommendation that, uh, we can send out to the commission. But that, we have been operating reliably. We have had, had, had to use the diesel backup from time to time. So that has been, um, uh, we're, we're working through it. Uh, there's not a lot of date. We haven't had any exceedances, but we're, um, operating prudently right now, so. Um, so that's some of the past. But then we have the, uh, monthly report and I guess I'll, I'll start at the end. Uh, Main and Peter Pan, that project is substantially complete. As well as the airport marking project, that's also substantially complete. We just started construction on work on the airport apron and we anticipate that'll be done around September. Um, so those are kind of some of the projects that we're rolling off the list. Uh, one of the projects that we're pushing ahead on the list as fast as we can is the, um, CDBG project for Lakeview Lift Station. Uh, we've had difficulties with the Lakeview pumps and the project is designed. So we're trying to move that as fast as possible into a bidding situation so we can replace that lift station as, as fast as possible. It's been a continuing source of, of difficulties for us. And it's, it's aged and it's, uh, beyond its useful life. Um, let's see. Skipping ahead to, uh, projects that, uh, the commission will be seeing relatively soon. Um, be seeing RCAs on the wastewater loan for the, uh, new sewer lines around First and Birch. We'll be seeing, uh, RCAs likely for the, uh, CDBG loan or CDBG project as we move that forward. Uh, the KDOT Maple Street cost share. That is, um, most of the KDOT projects that are, are, that where, uh, KDOT is contributing money, KDOT bids those. In this case, it's a city bid. So we'll, uh, that will be relatively soon. We anticipate, uh, getting an RCA to you in August on that one. Uh, KDOT Tenth and Main, that bid yesterday. So that one, I believe, uh, the apparent little bid that I saw on the internet was one point two, three million dollars for that project. So if everything I'm looking at is right, that puts us under the currently projected budget. Um, and then the master plan, uh, it sounds like in the special meeting in August, uh, we'll bring, bring PEC back for formal adoption of the master plan. So those are kind of the highlights that I had. And I did, uh, bring one on the list for this month. Uh, we did bring on the, uh, application for the KDOT Bridge Grant, which was approved earlier and will get that sent off to the state.
Awesome.
John, can you let people know, um, when the Maple Street project is estimated to start? We get a lot of questions on that one.
Yes, uh, the Maple Street, uh, the Maple Street project, uh, we would anticipate bidding in September and starting construction after New Ola, so off in November.
And what was the construction length?
Uh, the, there is a complete reconstruction between seventeenth and the city limits. So it's completely reconstructing the, the, um, the, the entire roadway.
And then the time?
Uh, the overall duration of the project?
Yes.
Oh, let's see what we have there. Um, we're looking at co- full completion of that project, uh, in and around third quarter of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
John, do you plan to do any more of that crack sealing in other parts on other streets or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Uh, we, we were evaluating kind of spreading out from the core business district because of the amount of traffic it, it gets. And again, um, those are streets that get a lot of traffic and so we wanna maintain our investment there as best we can.
Sure. And then my other question is on, due to the harshness of the, uh, winter in February, where we had all those water line breaks and we've had to go into the roadway to, uh, to make the repairs. Um, are those on schedule to, uh, I know they were filled in with rocks so they could settle. But are they on schedule to be, uh, fixed with a more permanent, uh, down the road, permanent patch down the road?
Of the, of the major ones that we had, I think we had twenty-some listed. Those should have been paved over. Uh, in fact, it was reported to me they were all paved over.
Okay.
Uh, but we have, there are some areas around town where previously we've got some rock in the roadway where as we find those, we're getting those. And we still have two more on, on that list.
Okay, okay.
So if you see, if you see more, let me know.
Okay, I, okay. I know where there's one at, but it may already be on your list.
Okay.
Me too.
So, and there may be more than one, but yeah, I could think of one right now, so.
And there is another way that, uh, those patches showed up, but that's a much longer story, so.
Okay, okay. Are we good?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you, John.
John, thank you very much for, I like this. I like getting the report and seeing where we're at.
Thank you.
The various stages and it says that we're covering a lot of ground.
Yes, we are. And we're, and the projects are moving onto and off of the list. It's, it's fun to see, so.
It is fun to see. I'm glad, I'm glad that's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving along, gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the city board minutes from the Electrical Board, the EDAB, and the Library Board of Trustees and the Recreation Commission. Any comments? Good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, moving along, city manager comments. Kelly?
So these are the special meetings, um, that's been referred to. Uh, the first one's a July twenty-sixth, um, meeting with the County Commission.
All right.
And I suggest you, um, schedule that for nine. So we're there for the public works discussion. And then though, we'll be discussing the American Rescue Act funding and all three commissioners indicated they wish to participate in that, so that will need to be a special meeting. The second one is actually the third Wednesday at nine AM, but that's the one we would like to do in August, on August eighteenth, talk about adopting the water plant master plan, which you previously received a draft of. So if you would like to make a motion officially setting those meetings, you may.
Do we need one motion each for those?
I think you could do one, couldn't you, Mr. Reynolds?
I'm prepared to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Hayes.
I move we establish a special committee meeting, commission meetings on July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one at nine AM and August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at nine AM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
And then the next item is, uh, we got some news that we were awarded the two CCLIP grants from KDOT that we applied for. We also applied for these last year and, and as you'll recall, we didn't get either one and this year we got both. So these are gonna be really great projects. Um, one is, um, mill and overlay chestnut for nine to, to Penn Avenue. And then the other, um, is, uh, to widen existing lades on Penn Avenue from Morningside to the north city limits. And I have the, the graphs there from when we originally submitted those. So we're pretty excited about these, uh, opportunities. Cause one of the number one things we did hear from the residents is they wanted money put in streets. And so these will be really great projects.
That's great news and, um, for people that are listening in or watching this meeting somewhere down the road, the KDOT grants, uh, total are one million, three hundred thousand dollars.
At the KDOT share?
At the KDOT share, huh? That's, that's, um, awesome. It's a huge amount.
Yes.
Uh, I'm glad that we have a, a really excellent working relationship with KDOT. And I know Leonard and Dana both said they've been very, um, good to Independence, so.
Yes, they have.
So, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see they've been approved. Thank you, Kelly.
Very exciting. Congratulations.
Thanks. And the next is that we have, um, hired Scott Patton as our new park and zoo director. Uh, we will have a press release going out tomorrow. He is currently a park ranger out at the, uh, Elk City Reservoir and he starts on Monday.
Okay.
And he, his, uh, first child is due August eleventh too, so it's gonna be an exciting.
Big year.
Few weeks for him.
Wow.
And that's all I have.
All right, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Hayes, you have any comments tonight?
Uh, just one. And, uh, each time we, uh, elevate the, uh, the City Hall project, um, and talk about the costs moving forward, I, I feel obliged to return, uh, to the idea that was elevated and, and emphasized by the City Hall Steering Committee and that is that the temporary City Hall facility, uh, should be sold and providing, provide the city with revenue to fund the renovations. Uh, what, uh, can you give us in terms of an update on progress on selling the temporary City Hall building?
Well, we first need that survey completed and we have the draft survey that was sent to Vance and then Vance today sent me several comments on it that, that needs some modifications that what he sent back to Bill Boo at Cornerstone and copied me. And so that's, um, basically where we're at on that.
Thank you.
Waiting for that survey. We are looking at, um, uh, we have a modification we need to make on when the generator comes in on Building D. It's not powering certain parts of the building and so we've got an estimate. We're gonna go ahead and get that corrected. I think it was what, nine thousand dollars, David? And to get that taken care of on the transfer switch for Building D.
Yes. Uh, for the emergency power?
Yes.
Yes.
And that also will help us with an issue we're having with the heat and cooling that goes off with dispatch. So when we had that one where we lost all the powers, when we found out we had this issue. So we're gonna go ahead and get that fixed. And then also, um, John is investigating and, and I see he's still here.
The fifteen thousand.
Uh, an opportunity, and that's just, uh, to do the.
John, can you come up for a second?
I'll let John explain it because it's, it's an opportunity to do some modifications that could potentially make the building more sellable as far as the energy use.
And John, you might tell him on the nine thousand, that little part that you, we've already authorized to get fixed, it's, could save some money.
Yeah, actually, yeah, there's a, um, the, uh, electrician who looked at our system, uh, found a rather large transformer humming. And he said, what's this one cover? And, uh, the, four lights and an outlet. So, yeah, he estimated that, uh, getting off of that particular transformer would probably save, uh, several hundred dollars a month, so. That's a nearly immediate return on any dollars we spend, so let's, let's just do. Just do, I told him just do that, just, you know, 'cause it won't take him long to get two circuits off, so.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, on the Building D energy efficiency, one of the things, if, uh, you, you've all been in there, and it sounds sometimes like you're, uh, perhaps on a jet carrier and there are airplanes up, up because it's so loud. The reason is, it's a wonderful ventilation system for a hospital, but for an office building, it is absolutely more than we need. Uh, plus many of the components were sized for a building that's no longer even physically there. Um, so we, we pulled some of the, the data on the cost for energy, and, you know, lighting's gonna be a portion of that, but, uh, a big chunk of it is natural gas and, um, for, for the heat and electricity in the summer. But as you go through the bills, you find that they're almost even every month of the year. There's very little variation. The way that the, the system is currently set up is it, uh, exchanges the air, what, ten times an hour? And as well as, uh, it cools the air, but before it hits the typical vent, it then often warms the air back up, and it also very, very accurately manages the humidity of the building. Great for a hospital, again, much more than we need for an office building. Uh, so we have, uh, discussed with PEC, and they think that there is a potential for substantial savings. And I have a, a proposal from them to, uh, engineer a, an energy reduction, uh, project. And it could be, and I know something had been looked at in the past, but people were looking at, uh, putting in, uh, variable speed motors, which is relatively expensive. The engineer I talked to, I, I really liked, uh, his thought is, "Let's change the pulleys." We can, we can make the motor work less, draw less energy, and move less air. So, uh, we're, I'm getting ready to engage with that engineer in order to, um, I, I believe, I, I, everything I've seen would lead me to bet that we would pay back his services plus the, the cost of the, the contract in a year or less. I don't have, again, that's just a belief, that's not actual numbers. When I give actual numbers, I'll share them, but, you know. That's, that's something I'm really anxious to get going on.
That'd also allow it to be easily modified back if it was to return to a medical facility.
Just switch the pulleys back.
Switch the pulleys back.
If, if they needed that ventilation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Instead of, if you change the variable speed motors, it's much more difficult and expensive.
Isn't it nice to have an engineer?
Definitely, yes.
And, and, and keep in mind that some of the components that we are currently using today were sized for a facility that's just not there anymore. Some of that capacity, even as you, if used as a medical facility, might not be necessary at all.
Yeah.
And that would be one of the big things we would have to get past to make the building sellable, because, you know, if we make it more efficient, it's gonna be much more attractive to somebody who would wanna buy it, so. Kudos to you, John, for coming up with this.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Good information to hear.
The, um, and, and hopefully at some point in time, a real estate professional will engage with us and also talk to us about other saleability issues that could very well move the property faster at a better price.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to those conversations as well.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Keflis, do you have any?
No, I have no comments tonight.
And I have none either. And David, we don't have any, uh, public concerns tonight, that's right. All right, then moving ahead, we are going, I'm gonna make a motion for an executive session, and the first one is, um, I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with an attorney representing the city regarding a legal issue pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. And Kelly, you say this will be fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Include myself, David, and Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds, all right. So the meeting will resume at eight forty-five, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the meeting is back in session, and there was no action taken. And we are gonna go back into executive session again. So I make a motion, I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of an employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personal exception, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. And that meeting will resume at, uh, nine oh two, and that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that will be, Kelly, and the commission? All right. All right, the meeting is, uh, back in session. Uh, there was no action taken, and moving forward, uh, we reached the point to where I make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.